So we'll call our meeting to order. Appreciate everybody being here. I believe Mr. Shealy will be here shortly. We were tied up with something earlier. I think he was going to have to do some things with, so he should be here. Also, always like to just take a moment and acknowledge Mr. Fulmer. So glad to have you with us this afternoon for the work session. Appreciate you just pouring into everything that's going on here, and we'll make sure to acknowledge you in the other meeting as well. All right. Item number one on our agenda is the review and discussion of the draft future land use map for the comprehensive plan. Mr. Shakur.
but today was a perfect storm. We did three CPST project kickoff meetings at Little Mountain, Whitmire, and Old Gollman School. Had an economic, promising economic development prospect get together, and then we just had an important meeting related to FEMA. So I feel somewhat ill-prepared, so I'm sorry. And my computer, when I got back into my office after the FEMA meeting, it's in the middle of an update. And I'm a paperless person. I might need to stand up and just reference what's on the screen. But I guess the first item of business that we wanted to run by y'all is the future land use map. And, you know, we have presented Katie working with the planning commission and our consultant have prepared that proposed future land use map. Y'all looked at it, I believe that was September 6th, when we had our last work session. And council provided a lot of input, detailed input on what you wanted to see on the map. And so the map on the left is the original, and the map on the right is the amended based on your feedback. And I guess before we sent this back to the planning commission for consideration, and of course it'll come back to you for final approval, we wanted to make sure this was in line with what y'all's expectations were. And you'll notice that we picked up, in terms of transitional development areas, we picked up the corridor there on the interstate. That was something y'all were real clear about that you wanted to see included. And that was one of really the primary changes. And then I believe that we picked up some more transitional areas outside of the municipalities. One in particular that stands out is around, you know, Little Mountain, because, you know, we've got, obviously, there's a lot of potential, you know, growth there. It might help.
Highway 76 corridor where we added the line.
Yeah, there in the interstate as well, going up toward the Lawrence County line. We picked up some on that left there that we talked about. As far as you can go until we hit the forest.
And you, I distinctly remember you even mentioned some corridor transitional designations outside of Whitmire.
Yes.
Get that up on the.
Yes. It has been a long day.
It's been a long day. I've seen my Batman outfield.
That's right. Couldn't find the phone booth.
Is there anything specific you wanted to add, or I talked to the gentleman.
Like you said, we added the 76 corridor and the interstate corridors.
No, being Whitmire, was that on 72 or 66?
Oh, no, I think we picked up a little bit on, yeah.
And we still try to keep it where our public water and sewer is available.
So those two maps really are married, aren't they?
They are.
Did we capture those definitions in here? We're just talking about transitional development.
She did, yes, sir. And it's, I don't know that we provided those back.
We did, no.
Okay, because I was looking at, because.
But they are part of the comprehensive plan with the land use element. And just for anybody who's listening, for everybody who may have have interest here, understand this land use element in the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan is a 10-year plan, and transitional in any of this comprehensive plan defined usage is still subject to going through zoning, rezoning, the multiple readings and inordinants. This is not pre-approving any land at any location for manufacturing or industry without, this is just shows a potential.
So we'll call our meeting to order. Appreciate everybody being here. I believe Mr. Shealy will be here shortly. We were tied up with something earlier. I think he was gonna have to do some things with, so he should be here. Also, always like to just take a moment and acknowledge, uh, Mr. Fulmer, so glad to have you with us this afternoon for the work session. Appreciate you just pouring into everything that's going on here, and we'll make sure to acknowledge you in the other meeting as well. All right, item number one on our agenda is the review and discussion of the draft future land use map for the comprehensive plan. Mr. Shakur?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chairman, and today, you know, perfect storm is probably a term that gets too overused, but today was a perfect storm. We did, we did three CPST project kickoff meetings.
Oh, okay.
Little Mountain, Whitmire, and Old Gollman School. Had an economic, promising economic development prospect get together, and then we just had an important meeting related to FEMA, so I feel somewhat ill-prepared, so I'm sorry. And my computer, when I got back into my office after the FEMA meeting, it's in the middle of an update. And I'm a paperless person. I might need to stand up and just reference what's on the screen since I don't have it in front of me. But I guess the first item of business that we wanted to run by y'all is the, um, future land use map. And, you know, we had presented, Katie, working with the planning commission and our consultant, had prepared a proposed future land use map. Y'all looked at it, I believe that was September sixth, when we had our last work session, and council provided a lot of input, detailed input, on what you wanted to see on the map. And so the map on the left is the original, and the map on the right is the amended based on your feedback. And I guess before we sent this back to the planning commission for consideration, and of course it'll come back to you for final approval, we wanted to make sure this was in line with what y'all's expectations were. And you'll notice that we picked up, in terms of, uh, transitional development areas, we picked up the corridor there on the interstate. That was something y'all were real clear about, that you wanted to see included. Um, and that was one of really the, the primary, uh, changes. Um, and then I believe that we picked up some more transitional areas outside of the municipalities. Uh, one in particular that stands out is around, you know, Little Mountain, because, you know, we've got, obviously, there's a lot of potential, uh, you know, growth there. Um, it, it might help.
That highway seventy-six corridor we added a lot.
Yeah, the highway seventy-six corridor.
There in the interstate as well, going up toward the Lawrence County line, we picked up some on that left there we talked about. As far as you can go until we hit the forest.
And, and you, and I distinctly remember you even mentioned some corridor transitional designations outside Whitmire.
That's good.
Get that up on the.
Yes. It has been a long day.
It's been a long day. Um, I'm saying my Batman outfield.
That's right. Couldn't find the phone booth.
Hey, is there anything specific you wanted to add, or I talked to the gentleman?
Like you said, we added the seventy-six corridor and the interstate corridors.
No, being Whitmire, was that, uh, on seventy-two or sixty-six?
Oh, no, I think, I think we picked up a little bit on, yeah.
And we still try to keep it where our public water and sewer is available.
Okay. So those two match really are married, aren't they? A lot of those facts, yeah.
They are.
Did we capture those definitions in here? We're just talking about transitional development.
She did, yes, sir. And it's, I don't know that we provided those back.
We, we did, no.
Okay, 'cause I was looking at, 'cause.
But they are part of the comprehensive plan with the land use element.
They will be in the land use element.
And, uh, uh, just for anybody who's listening, for everybody who may have have, have interest here, understand this land use element in the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan is a ten-year plan, and transitional in any of this, uh, comprehensive plan defined usage is still subject to going through, uh, zoning, rezoning, uh, the multiple readings and ordinance. This is not pre-approving any land at any location for manufacturing or industry.
Yes.
Without, this is just, shows a potential, so that if there is something that becomes available that a land user, landowner wants to sell that's within this, it gives him the opportunity to go before the zoning board and go through the zoning process.
This changes no one zoning as a, this is a topic, this is a, a tool, it is, it is.
Still have to go through the readings and the process.
We're not changing anyone zoning.
Yeah, I have, I have a lot of constituents that are afraid it's gonna raise their property values and their taxes and eventually the part, 'cause some of the, some of the best farm areas entered in there, and they're worried about that. I know.
It doesn't change the current rural designation. It doesn't, it does not change the tax value of the property in, anyway.
And the other part of that is, if, let's just say on, on the comprehensive, the future land use map, it's designated, uh, um, development, and someone comes in here for a rezoning, just because it's defined on this map as development, if that doesn't fit the, the characteristics of that property, it, that, this map doesn't even mean it will be rezoned to that. It's still gonna come to y'all for three readings, it's still got to go to planning commission. This is only a tool to use as guidance of how we make a decision.
Potential future.
It does not change anything.
I, I was gonna say, yeah, it's, it's a state requirement that we plan, and basically the council establish a vision, and then zoning in our land development regulations, which, you know, govern the subdivision of land, those are specific tools or instruments to implement the plan. And, you know, what council adopts now, council can also modify, and you can do that by ordinance. So, um, while it's a, it's a ten, every ten-year exercise, y'all may decide to revisit this at some point in the future, yeah.
I just wanted to make that clarification that.
I kinda got some of that.
That does not change anything, does not change property values, does not change zones, uh, and.
It's just an outlook of what we think might happen or could happen.
Right, and it's not an approval of that, it's just that if you don't have this, and if an opportunity comes up that the whole community is in favor of, then you don't wanna say, well, you know, you may be in favor of this, but our comprehensive plan doesn't support that, and then that adds a, an additional hurdle to making the change. So I just.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Good, good comment, good, good point.
Are there, are there?
Any other questions from any council or comments from any council member?
No, I was just bringing up my constituents' concerns, so I just went.
Thank you for that, and that will, so, um, if all are well tonight, this integrated planning commission for a recommendation, um, or meeting this month, which is the third Tuesday, and that is already on my PowerPoint to do the exact same explanation to the planning commission that this does not change anything, it's just a tool.
And then this'll come back to y'all, and, uh, kinda like we've been doing, you know, you, you've been using a motion and vote to accept a, a packet of, of elements, and then ultimately council will adopt the plan with, by ordinance, and there, there's a public hearing requirement, and state law requires that that hearing be advertised thirty days in advance. So that'll be, there'll be a schedule for that.
Okay. Now, anything else? All right, item number two on our agenda is the review and discussion of the draft property maintenance and nuisance code.
Yes, sir, and, and I don't know if, if y'all have in front of you, uh, there was a summary document that, uh, that Katie put together.
Yeah.
And, uh, Andrew set out, uh.
Yeah, indeed, Katie.
Okay, and, uh, and it just summarizes the changes, you know, y'all at, uh, you know, at the September sixth meeting, we, uh, discussed a proposed, uh, property maintenance and nuisance code ordinance. Uh, you know, currently, we, we don't have the tools in place to, um, uh, to deal with, um, you know, those, those, some of the challenges that those properties can present at times. And so, um, you know, we've developed this draft ordinance. The draft ordinance is incorporating y'all's feedback from September sixth, is on the agenda. We just thought it was really important that we set aside some time before first reading to have some discussion, to make sure that you're comfortable moving forward. Um, once we get done with this discussion, if y'all decide, um, that, hey, you know, we've got some concerns about, you know, one or more of the provisions in the ordinance, you could, you could read the ordinance at the six o'clock meeting, give it first reading approval with some conditions, or we could delay first reading. So, I mean, we're not, you know, you've got maximum flexibility in terms of, um, you know, how you deal with this. Um, but I thought the summary document was really helpful, because it just shows you the items that change. Um, and if you don't mind, I'd like to walk you through those individual ones, and then, you know, Katie can provide some information too. Um, and I'm sure y'all have some questions as well. But when you look in, uh, section three, uh, you know, this is in chapter one fifty-seven, so the, the section numbers all start with one fifty-seven, so I'll just reference it by everything to the right of the decimal point. So, section three, uh, that's where we identify public nuisances. Uh, subsection A, this is the sec, the subsection dealing with, uh, vehicles. And y'all had instructed us to limit the number of vehicles that a, uh, a tenant or a property owner, the number of, of unlicensed or inoperable vehicles that could be on a single property to no more than five, provided that they are screened. And so they would have to be screened from the public right-of-way and from adjacent properties. Um, so any vehicle that doesn't have a valid South Carolina tag, any vehicle that mechanically does not operate, uh, if you were gonna store that on your property, it would need to be screened from the primary public right-of-way and from adjacent property lines. And if it's screened, you could have no more than five, unless you were a licensed business or a, a permitted business under our zoning ordinance. Um, and so we went ahead and made that change, based on y'all's feedback.
I got a question with that.
Yes, sir.
With it. Uh, it was a maximum of five, 'cause originally, uh, what we, our original, I think, talked about maybe two vehicles, but we said up to a maximum of five. Uh, but when I read this, it sends, says abandon or junk vehicles where five or more such vehicles. It would be up to five maximum was what I remember us discussing, not five or more. I mean, how many?
That means if you had, the way it's written now, if you had four, you're okay, right? Kinda?
Yeah, I was thinking it was, I think they, I thought we started out at ten, and we said that was.
So we, we, we were gonna allow you to, where you could see them.
I got you.
And then we decided that we wanted them all to be.
Screened.
Screened up to five, so if you have six, it's got to go, you need five screened, however, but I do see what you're saying.
Yeah. You get five or more, so it should be up to a maximum of five.
Right.
So, what about if somebody has like a, a old pickup truck or something like that for, they put out in their front yard for like display and stuff like that?
Can I clarify that language a little bit? So, so what, what it's saying is the following are hereby expressly declared to be public nuisances. So this is what constitutes a nuisance, it would be aban, abandoned or junk vehicles where there's five or more of them. That is a nuisance. So anything under five with this language, it is kinda a little cumbersome, but anything under five would not be a nuisance, provided that they're screened.
So, all such vehicles shall be screened from view.
Yep.
Uh, let me, let me just ask for you to, I, I don't, I wouldn't hold up first reading on this, 'cause we can always revise wording, but I would ask for you to look at that, maybe there's some clarification on what you're saying, 'cause it wasn't immediately clear to me that we were saying you didn't have to.
Uh, yeah, I took away that it would be more than five, it was the way I left our last meeting.
That would be, would constitute a nuisance.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I tell you what, if you don't mind, I, I'll start from the beginning of the section and kinda read it, and we definitely will clarify this, and we could even massage some of the language.
Okay.
But the, but the section is, uh, the identification of public nuisances, and it's saying the creation or maintenance of a public nuisance is prohibited, the following are hereby expressly declared to be public nuisances, abandoned or junk vehicles where five or more such vehicles are stored on an individual property.
Right.
So the nuisance is if there are five or more.
Okay.
Which would not be permissible under this ordinance.
Gotcha.
If it's less than five, the next sentence deals with that, because if it's five or more, no matter where they're at, that's, that's a violation of the ordinance.
But it says, all such vehicles, seeming to refer back to that first sentence, shall be screened from view. Well, if it's five or more, it's not a matter of screening for view, they're not allowed.
Yeah.
So it's just, I, I think we got a semantics here, I think it's just some clarification needed.
Okay, yeah.
And so, and maybe Jeff or Katie one can, can address this for me, 'cause I.
I do like Mr. Sealy's question first.
My other question is, if you got a vehicle that's broke down, you take the tags off of it while it's broke down, but you're actively working on it, how would we, is there an exception in there for that somewhere?
I mean, I guess my thought would be, we identified, and if that person says, listen, I'm working on it, then you work with that individual while they're working on it. Now, if it goes to be six months and there's still no active progress on it, then at that point, but do we need to address that again?
I, I, it's not that I don't trust your judgment.
Yes.
But the, the problem is, we're trying to guess what somebody ten years from now and how they might enforce it, so I'd rather have it codified rather than just have it on a gentleman's agreement.
Sure, yeah, no, we, we can get that taken care of, and we can work, rework that language in, uh, that second sentence, um, so that it's clear, that it's, it, what we're talking about are only vehicles numbering, uh, fewer than five.
Gotcha.
Yep, yep, and address the, uh, issue that Mr. Sealy's brought up. Any other kind of questions or concerns about that, that one subsection? Okay, so it, staying in section three, uh, and this would be subsection M.
Wait, wait, let's go to golf.
Okay.
'Cause, um, it says, any noxious or excess of accumulation of material or any activity that causes an emission of odor gases or, or odors matter in such quantities to be offensive at the property line. Now, there was a Supreme Court decision that, um, said that odors could not be violations of trespassing, so that means if the odor came off another property to somebody else's, they couldn't, they couldn't charge them for that. Did, did Joni look, did you, Joni look into that, 'cause I brought that case in?
Yeah, unfortunately, um, Joni had a conflict, um. I'll need, I'll need to follow up with her on that. I, I know she looked at it, um.
And, and didn't we discuss that if it was ag smells that they were.
They're exempt under the exemption language, yeah.
They are.
Yeah.
There's a general ag exemption.
And this, this case came from the landfill in Lee County, and that Supreme Court ruled against it. Against the person that brought the suit against the landfill, so.
Well, we got another problem.
But that would be considered private property.
Mills, with Newberry County water and sewer.
Right.
Right, you know, so.
Well, there.
It already came before us.
There's an exemption, if they're licensed business, they're exempt.
It goes with their business.
Okay. 'Cause I know he'll be back.
I checked that out.
You know he'll be back.
I, I checked those things, uh, ag and the businesses were one of my first concerns, is how, how we, how are we gonna affect that? We don't cut our nose off to spite our face here.
He brought me D-Hick records the other day, so I, he, he'll be back.
Mm-hmm.
And understandably, I mean.
Mm-hmm.
But, but I'm, I'm, we'll need to talk with Joni about the, the private property, the non-business, um, you know, property.
Yeah, just make sure how that, that case ruling affects private property and stuff.
Okay.
Good catch, Carl.
And I'm just highlighting as we go. Okay. Any, any subsections before M? That y'all wanna talk about? Okay, with M, we addressed the, Katie did the agricultural implements. Mr. Sealy, I think you brought that up at the September sixth, um, work session. And so this, uh, this, this makes it clear that when we talk about items that, that meet, um, you know, the adjectives that are used there, that it's not including agricultural implements or items used for agricultural purposes. Is that language pretty much in, in line with what y'all were looking for there?
'Cause, yeah, I have some neighbors that actually have old plows they use for decorations in their, in their yards and stuff.
Yeah, I've got one down the road that does the same thing. After you brought that up, I said, yeah, you know, I've seen a fair amount of that, actually.
Holds a lot of mailboxes, I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Any, any other subset, I mean, we didn't have it on the outline, 'cause I, we didn't show any other concerns, you know, all down from M, but was there anything else in section three that, you know, concerned y'all, or you had any questions about? Okay, here and none. Uh, on the outline, this is where we get into general requirements. Um, you know, a concern was expressed when dealing with, uh, homes that, um, are identified as being unfit for human habitation, that, the, the, the standard that they would be held to in terms of, of needing to be brought up to code would be the code that was in effect at the time that they were completed, that dwelling was completed, and so that language has been added there. I think, I think.
So, so just in case, so, say you had a house built in the eighteen hundreds, so it may not have been any code back then, but it had been remodeled in the seventies and again in the eighties, which code does it apply to the last time it had any?
The ICC for houses that are marked historical, they have their own code.
Okay.
And a, and a house like that would fall into that code.
Any other, uh, I think that language looks pretty good.
We had had a conversation, Jeff, about if, if we went to tell somebody it was, uh, their residence was not habitable, that we would have that reviewed by somebody, uh, the department head, and then my request was that also by you. I think if we're gonna take that bold of a step, our county administrator needs to know we're fixing to, to make that kinda notice, and, and we need to know that we're fixing to take that kinda notice, so were you able to get that added for us?
Yes, sir, we sure did, and, and that's in, uh, subsection six, under authority.
Six.
Yep, and, uh.
I got you. I just had to turn the page.
Yeah, no, no, I know, I'm, I'm glad you, glad you brought that up. Um, and so what we have here is basically any, uh, local official, so we're talking about code enforcement officers that are designated by the county administrator would have, uh, would have authority to, uh, determine that a structure's unfit. But before doing that, um, they would, uh, inform the Director of Planning and Development Services, which is Katie, and the county administrator, and that would be prior to the issuance of a violation. Um, and that also would give us the ability to, to share that information with y'all.
Yes.
So you know what's going on, uh, before it occurs.
And they still would have a court appeal process as well, above and beyond that, but.
They would, well, and, and they would also have the ability to appeal to the, um, uh, the, it's, we're not calling it a construction board, but.
No, we're calling it, it's, it's a kind of lengthy, it's the Newberry County Building, Fire and Nuisance Codes Board's appeal. And that, we implemented that with the, um, adoption of the, uh, fire inspections. That way, this board could hear, if the business owner wanted to feel that, feel nuisance and any kind of building codes.
Okay.
If they can't afford to or refuse to fix something, what are we gonna do?
Well, that'd be a violation of the ordinance. Of course, this would be after, you know, if they availed themselves of that opportunity to appeal, it would be after that, but it would be a violation of the ordinance, it would go to magistrate's court. Um, and then, you know, magistrate would make that decision.
I mean, 'cause I know of a place on one twenty-one that, the lady actually died, but it's a health hazard to walk on the property.
Mm-hmm.
And one thing that is a little different than probably what you're speaking of, but they could, um, enter into an, an action agreement, and that would give the county and the owner to basically come up with a timeline. So if they couldn't afford to replace their roof and, I don't know, the windows all at once, then we could come up with a timeline, so, okay, the, the, let's do the roof now, and then let's come up with a date that you do your windows, and as long as. And then let's come up with a date that you do your windows. And as long as they are keeping up with their timeline, then we would work with them. But if they ever broke that agreement, then we would have the right to, to write a settlement. But we, we do have that chance to enter into agreement more quickly.
There's places, this particular one, the roof was falling in, the floor was gone. And you couldn't walk through the property for animals and, I mean, would the county take possession of that or?
No.
And clean, and take responsibility to clean that mess up?
No.
Cause I wouldn't wanna touch it. And there's a, there's more than one place like that on, in Newberry County.
Mm-hmm.
It's, that, this particular woman couldn't afford it and wouldn't do it. So I don't know, what, what would you do in that instance?
Well, I mean, we, we would have the ability, I mean, we can go, and I know, you know, the, the word is not a nice word, but I mean, we can go through a condemnation process. And, you know, we do have the ability to, uh, place a lien on the property. It's just the collectability of the, of the lien that's, that's the major question mark. Of course, cities have that challenge too, but particularly counties because of the language in the statute. So, I mean, we can go that route. And that's the thing about code enforcement, this is one important component, you know, having this ordinance in place. But code enforcement, generally speaking, it costs money, you know? Uh, in terms of staff and then also in, in certain cases, abating nuisances. So, I mean, that would be.
The county wouldn't wanna spend the money to clean something like that up, because.
Yeah, I, I did have, I, I mean, I, we're in discussions, I guess it's okay to chase a squirrel for a minute. I was talking to the Senator, Representative McLeod today, uh, at our function, and he was telling me that they're struggling with vehicles just left on the side of the interstate. And the record drivers tow them in, and the car ain't worth what the record bill was. They, they're trying to figure out a way to come up with a criminal charge for leaving cars on the side of the road and just abandoning them, so.
Just walking away from them.
Yeah, yeah, just walk away from them, kinda let it be, so. But, you know, tow's two hundred and fifty dollars now, two hundred and twenty-five, two hundred and fifty dollars. You got cars out there that ain't worth.
Well, more than that.
That.
Well, and I, I gotta tell you, I mean, I know it's talking about down the street, but, but that's what we ran into with the city, you know, uh, in the early two thousands is that, you know, we had folks that were just, they'd get what they could out of a piece of property, and at the end of it, they'd do very little deferred maintenance on it. And then they'd walk away from it, and it became the city's responsibility to address the situation and.
City's problem.
Yeah, yeah. And so, you know, you were tied to that property seemingly forever. I mean, you tear the structure down, have to cut the grass.
There's places where we're gonna be in that shape with this.
Yeah. And it was just, you know, code enforcement was something we budgeted every year. And going back to what Katie mentioned, that's a really good tool. I, I always, it reminded me of like a consent order with DHEC when you've got a a violation at your wastewater plant or water plant, and you enter into an agreement with the department. And you, I mean, basically you have an agreement with milestones, and there's minimum standards that have to be met, and that's exactly what we did down the street. She and, and I, at different times, but we'd sit down with the property owner and then come to a written agreement on, these are the minimum steps that must be taken, and these are deadlines to complete the individual step. You've gotta have milestones, you can't just a, a deadline and you've gotta complain it. And so we would, we would hold property owners to that. And so it was.
I just know I, I've been in a lot of yards in Newberry County that won't meet these requirements. And they won't fix them. Don't have the money to fix them.
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I guess it wouldn't be a problem until somebody claimed it to be a nuisance.
That's right. We, we, kind of the, the action we feel like we're gonna take is we're not gonna go looking for these. This will be on complaint basis only.
Because if you go looking for them, we'll go broke.
Now, now, we did talk about, and I know, I know Katie's a big believer in this too, is that when we have a violation in an area, we'll, we will, uh, yeah.
Kinda go.
We'll canvass that area.
That way they can't say, well, my neighbor next door has X, Y, Z. We will try to hit the area.
Cause it, cause it is always, well, Mr. Smith or Mrs. Smith down the road, you know, so.
Gotcha.
All right, so that's authority, uh. So the next one, and this is actually one I don't believe, I don't think y'all identified, but Katie actually did, under notifications. Uh, that's, um, section eight, subsection E. So I mean, I'm going between documents here. And this is about the, the date of completion of an abatement. So this is after you get a notice of violation, but before you get an ordinance summons. An ordinance summons would be when you, when you didn't correct a deficiency within the period of time given. That period of time is, uh, seven calendar days, we wanted to clarify. So, uh, she got that inserted, so there, there was no question mark. So long as y'all are comfortable with that. But it would be seven calendar days to abate the nuisance. Or alternatively, depending on the nature of it, they could meet with us and we could come up with a corrective actions plan.
That's right.
We wanna hear from you in seven days.
It makes, it makes the first call, make, make some communication between the two.
And then we'll do our best to work with folks, you know? The next section that we, uh, that y'all had asked us to, to look at were for appeals. And so this is, uh, section eleven. And this would be for where a demolition is required. So, I mean, if we, if we identified that, that, you know, we had a, a structure that was deficient, it's un, uh, unfit for human habitation or occupation, um, the owner would have the ability to, uh, to appeal that determination to the Building, Fire and Nuisance Code, Code Board of Appeals. And, um, they, now, they would not have the ability to levy any kind of fine, they would just simply hear the appeal. And then, you know, after that, potentially, you could still run into, uh, you know, it, going to magistrate's court. So, I mean, if the appeals board would, would, uh, find it to be, uh, in need of demolition, you know, th, this determination's accurate, then you potentially could have an ordinance violation. Then, and then, and that's the point in time, if there were any fines levied, it would be done at that level. The appeals board would just simply hear, um, an, an appeal of the determination by the code official. That would be their role. And this is a board too, that we still need to, uh, need to establish. Like we had mentioned, y'all would do that with an ordinance, and then you would appoint individuals to the board. Um, and we're in the process of working on that.
I found that wording also to be a little bit confusing, Jeff. And it could be just my lack of ability to understand things, but when I read that last sentence about the fire, you know, you have an appeal, you have, you appeal to the, the board. And then the board has, uh, can't levy fines or penalties or amend the standards of the ordinance. But it's, it kinda, you appeal it to the board, but it doesn't, it leaves you kinda hanging. Uh, does the board then, uh?
So basically the.
Do they accept the appeal or do they reject the appeal?
That the board could either say that they agree with the code enforcement officer, that it does need to be demolished. Or they could say, you know, it doesn't need to be demolished, but they could say, but you need to fix the, the roof, you need to fix the windows, so.
So I'm left hanging a little bit right here when I read this. It just kinda, you can appeal it, but.
What happens with?
What happens?
So maybe, maybe a little bit.
Does the appeal get accepted, declined? If it gets accepted, what happens? If it gets declined? So just a, a little bit of clarification.
Yeah, we, yeah, we could add some language in there, yeah. And, and just like Katie said, it would either.
Shouldn't slow down my vote on these ordinance, but if something prior to second and third reading, it might be improved.
That we need to get addressed. Okay, will do, yeah. And like Katie said, it would be, it would be sustaining the determination by the code, uh, enforcement officer, uh, potentially overruling it, or like she said, a, a modification, some middle ground.
And where it's deemed to be demolished, who's responsible?
The owner.
The owner, yeah.
We'll put that in there.
And, uh, and that, that's the point in time where, you know, of course, we're not in the, like, code enforcement business right now. So as it stands now, without a budget for code enforcement, it would go to magistrate's court as a ordinance violation. If they fail, you know, if they have a demolition order, they, they fail to comply, it would go to magistrate's court. You know, with some local government, cities and counties, then they may go through a condemnation proceeding to bring it down. But generally, you're gonna exhaust all of other avenues before you do something like that. Which I know would be what y'all would wanna do. And of course, we don't have a budget for it.
Right.
Okay, um. Then in section twelve, which is the next one, uh, we removed, uh, jail as a, as a penalty. So we just have the maximum fine amount for summary courts in there at five hundred dollars and remove the, uh, the reference to imprisonment. And then in the correction agreement section, which is section fifteen, it's, we're at the end there or near the end, um, we added, uh, language for other nuisances that exist. So, um, you know, it starts off upon determination that an unsafe structure, um, and we added yet, or other nuisance exists, and notice of violation is provided to the property owner, such owner may enter into a correction a, agreement with the county. So we wanted to, it not just to apply to unsafe structures. This would be sort of like an alternative dispute resolution mechanism.
Say here's fifty junk cars, we could give them a date to have five, and then another date to have five more just to work its stuff out instead of asking them to get rid of fifty in seven days.
Or like I'm picturing with the property you mentioned, uh, you know, if there's a lot of refuse and all, I mean, you know, that can't be accomplished overnight, so we would come up with a plan. And you make it as specific as you can with dates and you hold, you hold folks to it. And work with them, work with them to develop it too. I mean, it's a, you know, cooperative process.
Any other questions or comments from council? I think we're very close to something that's gonna be good for Newberry County in the long run.
A needed thing, but I think we're gonna have instances where we're gonna have.
Oh, sure, oh, sure.
But we'll have to handle those as, as they come.
That's right.
But overall, it's a good plan we'd like to make.
Okay. Hearing no further comments, number, the next item on our agenda is an executive session related to an economic development matters. Uh, is there a motion that we move into executive session? Motion by Mr. Sees, uh, second by Mr. Shealy. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands. Opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move into executive session.
Executive session. Come out of executive session, motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Hilt, any discussion? All those in favor, by show of hands. County Council met in executive session for the mentioned reasons as we went into executive session for economic development matters, no action was taken. Is there a motion that we adjourn our five o'clock meeting? Motion by Mr. Shealy and second by Mr. Sees that we adjourn the meeting, is there any discussion? All in favor, by show of hands, that meeting is now adjourned. We now call our six o'clock meeting to order. We appreciate everyone being here tonight, and we're gonna ask the Honorable Nick Shealy to do our invocation and pledge.
Dear Lord, I pray that you will bless and keep us in this meeting. Lord, please shine your face on us and be gracious to us. I pray that we will sense your presence during this gathering because you are with us wherever we go. I pray that our gathering will be centered on you and your intentions for us as a body of believers. Let our actions in this meeting contribute to our goal of encouraging and strengthening one another, for it is in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, it is so good to see all of you with us tonight. It's always a blessing to get together. Appreciate everything that's going on. Today's been quite a busy day for council, and so we appreciate all the hard work by members of council. Also like to take a minute to acknowledge Mr. Fulmer, who's here with us. He was here with us for the work session, and we just are all looking forward to you working with us, and you'll be sitting up here next meeting, as a matter of fact. So, we're excited about having you. Item number one on the agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. Unless there's objection from council, we'll take them both together. Hearing no objection, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda, which consists of the Newberry County Executive Session Minutes of October eighteen and the Newberry County Council Meeting Minutes of October eighteen? Motion that those minutes be approved by Mr. Sees, second by Mr. Hilt, is their discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by show of hands, and opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Item two, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion, we approve the agenda as published? Reverend Scurry makes the motion, Mr. Reader makes the second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by show of hands, opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously to adopt this agenda. Item number three is a proclamation declaring November as Family Court Awareness Month in Newberry County. We do have a proclamation, it was part of your packet for you to review, is there a motion that we adopt this proclamation? Motion by Mr. Hilt, second by Mr. Shealy, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by show of hands, opposed likewise, we do adopt that proclamation declaring November as Family Court Awareness Month in Newberry County. Item number four on our agenda is ordinance number one zero dash zero one dash two zero two three, an ordinance acting on a request to amend the official zoning map established pursuant to zoning ordinance number one two dash two four dash zero one, as revised and amended by zoning ordinance number zero six dash one one dash one six, and codified in chapter one fifty-three of the Newberry County Code of Ordinances, establishes zoning classifications and districts as to rezone one real estate parcel totaling one acre designated as TMS number three three nine dash one dash zero, from RG, which is General Residential, to R two rule. This is the third reading, Katie, has anything changed, still nothing on that? Is there a motion, this be third reading? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Reader, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by show of hands, opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Item number five is the ordinance number one zero dash zero two two zero two three, which is an ordinance adopting Newberry County Fire Protection and Prevention Code, providing for periodic inspections and enforcement of the code, and establishing a process for appeals and penalties for violations. This is the third reading, is there a motion that this be third reading? Motion by Mr. Sees, second by Mr. Shealy, is there discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I'm thinking more about our, uh...
The other one.
Item number nine.
Yes. Alright, is there discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, by show of hands, and opposed likewise, that motion carries unanimously. Item number six on our agenda is ordinance number one zero dash zero three dash two zero two three, which is an ordinance to authorize the county of Newberry by Newberry County Council to sell real estate described in attached exhibit A, which is incorporated herein by reference known as tax map number four five one dash one zero dash one to Truecast LLC upon such terms and conditions described in the bill of sale in exhibit B. This is the public hearing, I hereby declare the public hearing open. Anyone who wishes to speak in for or opposed to this ordinance is welcome to come to the podium at this time. Seeing no one move, unless there's objection by council, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Without objection, the public hearing is now declared closed. This is second reading, Mr. Shakker, anything changed since our first reading?
Uh, no sir, no changes. This was just a condition of the Philo that the county entered to back in the nineties with Truecast.
Okay. Alright, you've heard the explanation from Mr. Shakker, nothing has changed since our first reading, is there a motion, this be second reading? Motion by Mr. Hilt, second by Mr. Sees, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by show of hands, and opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Ordinance, sorry, item number seven is ordinance number one zero dash zero four dash two zero two three, which is an ordinance to amend county ordinance one two dash three zero dash one zero to provide for alternate members of county committees. And this would allow, if council member can't attend, this, Mr. Sees rightly brought this up, in fact, we had a public safety committee where he could have helped us out at, he can, that county council member on that committee would be allowed to appoint a designee from council to be there standing in their stead, so we can still have our committee meeting. So, just so you know what that's about. Based on that, we declare the public hearing open in this matter. Anyone who wishes to speak for or opposed to this ordinance can come forward at this time. Seeing no one move, without objection from council, I'll declare the public hearing closed? With no objection, the public hearing is now closed. Subsection B of this item, agenda item, is the second reading, is there a motion, this be second reading? Motion by Mr. Hilt, second by Mr. Shealy, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by show of hands, and opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Item number eight on our agenda is resolution number one one dash two three, which is a resolution authorizing and approving the assignment in assumption of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement and other matters related there too. Mr. Shakker?
Uh, yes sir. The county entered into a new fee in lieu of tax agreement back in twenty eighteen with Switzer Maldie International, you know, they have an engineered papers division that was previously located in the Newberry County Industrial Park and is now in the Mid Carolina Commerce Park. Of course, they moved down there at the time that Samsung announced, and Samsung expanded into that real estate that Switzer was located at. They are in the process of selling to a company called Evergreen Hill, which has the intention of operating their facility, it'll be, you know, production as usual, they're gonna maintain the status quo in terms of production level and what they're producing there. This transaction was expected to close by the end of the month, and Evergreen Hill has every intention of operating the facility as it's been operated. State law requires the use of an ordinance to enter into a fee in lieu of tax agreement with the county following a public hearing, but state law actually allows an ordinance, a resolution, or administrative action to be taken by the county to transfer that, the terms of the fee in lieu agreement to the purchaser. I know y'all felt strongly as a council that we should not do that administratively, and that y'all take action in open session on that, and so we prepared a written resolution which is in your packet, and what that will enable the purchaser, Evergreen Hill, to do is then to apply to Department of Revenue for fee in lieu of tax treatment on their real estate and buildings and equipment.
Okay. Any question from council for Mr. Shakker? We've got some documentation, we've had some other discussions as well?
Just for clarification, nothing changes with their deal, I mean, same fee in lieu agreement, and they're gonna continue on operating as Switzer.
Yeah, yes sir.
Are we not offering them anymore, or is the same, just transferring that deal to the new owners? Any other questions? Comments? Motion, is there a motion that this, we pass this resolution? Motion by Mr. Hilt, second by Mr. Reader, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by show of hands, opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Item number nine on our agenda is ordinance number one one dash zero one dash two zero two three, which is an ordinance regulating public nuisance and unfit dwellings within Newberry County, and providing procedures for enforcement penalties for violation and matters related there too. Just, I'm gonna let Mr. Shakker go, and then you go ahead first, and then I'll follow, and then we'll let anybody else make any comments they want to.
Uh, yes sir, yes sir. Well, we, of course, we've gotten a good bit of interest that has been directed towards property maintenance and the condition of properties in the county, and the county is a, local government in South Carolina does have statute authority to enforce property maintenance and nuisance codes. At the present time, the county doesn't have the tools necessary to address properties where we have, you know, maintenance issues, and so the ordinance that's in front of you tonight, and, you know, we've had a couple of work sessions to discuss it, September sixth was one, and then earlier this evening, we went through the ordinance. What it would do would be to give the county the tools needed to address properties with maintenance and nuisance conditions, and so it's a pretty comprehensive ordinance, addressing, you know, dereliction in abandoned buildings, those that are unfit for human habitation, junk vehicles, accumulation of rubbish and garbage, and other similar nuisance, you know, structural defects and other similar nuisance conditions that exist on properties. It would establish a process that would be followed from, you know, in terms of code enforcement to address those, in terms of providing notice, giving the owner, and in some cases, the tenant, and/or they can be jointly or severally held liable, to address the nuisance conditions and abate them, and if that's not done, well, then the next step in the process would be an ordinance summons, and magistrate's court would have jurisdiction to hear those cases. But there are provisions in the ordinance for alternative methods of resolving these issues, and one is the ability to meet with county staff during the seven-day notice period, to, I kinda consider it like a consent order. I mean, there's an opportunity to work with us to develop a corrective actions plan with milestones for completing each element, so that we can hopefully avoid an ordinance summons. This also would allow property owners that are in disagreement about determinations that are made by our code enforcement staff to appeal that, and they would appeal it to a board that would hear building code, construction appeals, property maintenance appeals related to code enforcement, and also, you know, we have the new fire marshal position and fire codes. So, if they wanted to appeal a determination by the fire marshal, they could go to this same board, and this board will need to create it, county council will do that with an ordinance, and then you would appoint the members, and the goal would be that we put individuals, county residents with expertise in the area of design and construction on the board to hear those. So, this is a pretty comprehensive ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shakker. I would point out before I call the vote, I know it's proper to take comments after we get a motion and a second, but I think it would behoove us to do this, is our work session at five o'clock focused a lot on this, we made some changes, and so what we read tonight, his first reading will be a evolving product that will be morphed into more of what we want, so what we vote on tonight will not be the final product, there'll be some changes in the second reading of that. And also, I'd heard from a couple of people, particularly over the last two or three days, and I wanna make abundantly clear that anything related to agriculture, any farms or agriculture or non-forestry, anything not inhabited by humans are exempt from this ordinance, so it would not affect our farm land, farm country in any way whatsoever. Farmers are the backbone of Newberry County, we will never allow something to affect our agricultural history and what continues to be part of our lifeblood, so that, it also excludes farm equipment even from the ordinance, so, just to make that clear. And before we vote, since I took a little bit of liberty, I'd open it up for anybody else to take liberty if they would like.
I would just agree with you about, we'll have to, we have wording already established for this first reading, but we've already talked with the administration, and they know about some changes we'll want before second reading, so our approval of first reading, if that's the way our vote turns out, will be contingent of future changes going forward, so...
Absolutely.
Yes sir.
Anybody else? Hearing none, is there a motion that this be first reading? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Reverend Scurry, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by show of hands, opposed likewise, motion carries unanimously. Item number ten is appointments, does anyone have any appointments to make tonight? Hearing none, item number eleven is public comments, and we have Brandon Wicker signed up for public comments.
Thank y'all for letting me speak. We went over this September eighteenth at the Public Safety Committee. This is about the fire engines, and the state of where we're at in the county right now. Like I said, the average age of our frontline engines, which are the ones that are the first out, those are the ones you're gonna see, average age is roughly around twenty years old, so, those are, that's really old. NPA recommends in that ten to fifteen range is when they need to be off that frontline, and we're sitting on twenty years, just that, that's the average. We do have some that are newer than twenty years old, but you see where I'm going with this, there's some that's really past that twenty-year prime. So, just to give you kind of a rundown, we have one that's a ninety-four, one of them that's a ninety-five, six that are two thousand and four, that was the last really big engine purchased that we had in the county, one of them that was purchased in two thousand and six, there are three from twenty twelve, and the newest one is a twenty eighteen. It's been five years since we purchased an engine in Newberry County. Currently, we have seven that are in need of immediate replacement. Three of them are gonna be due in roughly three years, and that's if I give, that's if we agree to go on like a fifteen-year window. So, that's kinda where we're trying to lie on is that fifteen-year swap windows, we need to be getting them out. And I'm looking at, right now, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to look at is, we're looking to trying to update our fleet to something that's a little bit different than what y'all are used to seeing in Newberry County with our engines. Our engines typically what they call a commercial cab, it's kinda like a dump truck, but it's got a fire body on the back of it. We're gonna switch, we're wanting to switch to a custom cab. The custom cabs, they look more like fire engines, the ones that you typically see on TV, the flat nose, cab over, if you understand, you know, like a semi-designed, it's a cab over truck. Reasons being is because what we can do is, we can actually free up the space in some of our storage bins that's on the outside of the truck, because currently we're having to use one whole storage bin just for SCBA's. It also, those trucks that are, that are custom cabs are built to a higher safety standard than a regular commercial cab, you know, that's just the way they build them, because of the way they're manufactured and the way they're tested. So, it will double, it will actually have a lot of benefits for the county in general because eventually we may end up having to pay, having to have a paid staff in the county eventually, it's, you know, it's just the way things run out, and if we ever do, those trucks allow us already to be established to have that. But I'm here, like, I'm here tonight because we ran into a deal from a company that we deal with for other fire equipment that we purchase, which is Safe Industries, they sell a number of different brands of trucks, KME one being two of the main manufacturers they do sell. They have, at the time, in September, they had roughly eleven KMEs that were, would be ready to purchase in the first quarter of next year. They're telling, they're saying January, but they just want you to be on the safe side and go the first quarter. Right now, I just spoke to the guy probably about an hour and a half ago, they're down to ten. The eleven that they had was two top mounts, which is the ones where the pump is essentially, the pump panel is essentially in the center of the truck, it's, you get up on top of the truck and you operate the pump panel there, and they have, and they had ten, I mean, they had nine side mounts, whatever it was. Anyway, so, we had, we had two, they had enough engines. So, they're down to ten side mounts and one top mount. The one top mount is a truck that we like to use out on interstate, keeps the, it keeps the pump operator, if there is a fire on interstate, it keeps the pump operator out of the road. It's actually allows him to have a cocoon of safety around him in that truck, man, it's not, still not gonna be a fun ride if somebody hits him, but he's safer because he's in the truck. So, the top mount is one that we would really, you know, if we were looking, we really love to purchase on that. Those trucks right now, they're ranging anywhere, those trucks right now that we're looking at, they're ranging from that seven hundred thousand window to about eight hundred thousand window, that's kinda where we're at. And I say seven to eight, the truck is actually probably would be a little bit cheaper, but we need loose equipment, we add loose equipment on because the trucks that we're taking out of service, some of them may not have enough equipment to re-outfit the truck. And it allows us to, you know, play the numbers game, and they can order all the stuff, and it can already be on the truck, and the truck's prepared when it comes to us. That number, that number sounds like a lot of money, and I know it's high, seven hundred thousand dollars is a lot of money to spend, it doesn't matter how you look at it, but in the world of fire engines, and in the world of fire trucks in general, the engines, tankers, pumpers, and the tower trucks, price is doing nothing but going up. These same trucks, if I come to you next year at the same time, and we're talking about the same trucks at the same time, we're looking at a million plus on the truck. They're looking at right now, probably a million two to three after the first year is what these particular trucks would be. The reason why these trucks are so cheap is because they were purchased, they were actually ordered on like a purchase from another group, and they went on to order the truck, because they know they can sell them whether they sign the contract or not. And they were purchased roughly, probably around the twenty-four month window, and that's how long it takes to get these trucks. But these trucks will be available in January to February. If we order many, if we order our own, they're gonna be, you're gonna be two years out. That's kinda what I'm saying is, we're at a time in the county with our fire engines, and amongst other things, is we're trying to get things, is get our stuff back up to par, we kinda let that stuff kinda drag on over the years, and we're trying to play catch-up, and playing catch-up's not fun when it costs seven hundred thousand dollars apiece, but that's where we're at. And I just, that's what I wanted to bring to the whole council and let everyone know that we're out here trying to make things better for the county, better for the citizens, and right now, this is the cheapest route to go about it, and it makes the most sense to do it now and do it quickly, because these trucks will be available, whereas if we try to purchase something else, like I said, it's, we're two years out. And just to kinda give you an idea, on these custom cabs, these custom cabs are around twenty-four to thirty-six months out, if we do a commercial cab, which is what we're standard by now, they're thirty-six months out or longer, and they can't give you a price. I know that's a little expensive, but that's kinda where this, everything's at, and this is cheap compared to what we would be talking about next year at this time.
Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation, we're, we've tried to make, Public Safety's tried to make, the committee has made everybody aware, Mr. Shakker's aware, I shared with a couple of people by phone today, we're looking to find the money, finding the money for two fire trucks and the air packs, and the air packs, from what I've understood, has got to be done sooner rather than later, so basically another million there, so it's just gonna take some time to find the money, but when we do, we'll have you back to Public Safety, and we can talk about trucks and all that kinda stuff, and then the Public Safety Committee will be happy. I know I speak for Reverend Scurry and Mr. Sees on the Public Safety Committee, we want to move forward on that, but finding two and a half million dollars in the middle of a budget year is just not, not an easy thing to do, so, we've gotta work our way through it. And I welcome anybody else to say anything.
That's true.
That's true, that's just true, that's right, that ain't, that's just true. I mean, that... That is, that is true. I mean that with a heart full of love. I don't mean it to sound bad or anything else. It's just...
Not falling on deaf ears.
That's right. We hear you. We hear you loud and clear. All right. Nobody else has signed up for public comments. Comments from the county administrator?
Yes, sir. Like you mentioned earlier, we, this today was a really busy day. So, I feel like we accomplished a lot. You know, the work session, I think, before this meeting was really helpful, just getting some additional direction, Katie and I from y'all on the nuisance ordinance. But we also had three, I think, very productive kickoff meetings. And I say we, Karen, Crystal, and myself with DP Three Architects, which is one of the architectural firms that we'll be working with on the capital project sales tax projects. We had productive kickoff meetings with them in Little Mountain, Whitmire, and at Old Galman School. You know, and those are three of the twelve projects that were on the ballot that, and are three of the eight that will need architectural services under the umbrella of the county. And so, we were able to have three of those today. Of course, Little Mountain is Reunion Park, Whitmire is the city, the town gym there, and Old Galman School is a renovation project. And so, we had Clayton Construction, our construction manager, the project architect, the owner, and the three of us were there. And it's just, it's good because we can get a feel for, you know, what's the relative importance to each one of the owners to the elements of the project. So, if we get into a situation where there's any value engineering that needs to be done, we know where, you know, the areas that we would try to value engineer within. We've got four more of those scheduled coming up and all four of them are on November eighth. So, that's next Wednesday and that would be the Amphitheater, Prosperity, Pomeria, and Public Safety Complex. So, that's a meeting with Tommy and his team. So, we'll do those on the eighth and then we should soon be in a position to award a contract or bring a recommendation to y'all to award a contract for architectural services on the detention center. So, that's that eighth project that will require architectural and engineering services under the umbrella of the county. The city and the water and sewer authority are doing their own projects. So, we had a real productive day and that process is moving. And then on November fifteenth, the next stop, step in the process for council to authorize the issuance of debt for those projects will be on the November fifteenth agenda. That'll be second reading and public hearing of the ordinance to issue the GO bonds.
Okay. And that will allow our municipalities to move forward on their projects?
Yes, sir. And it's a goal, it's a goal, but our goal is to try to have the proceeds of the debt in hand in February. So, we're doing our best to get that done. And I know Theo's working really hard right now. Theo DeBeau is our bond attorney on all the disclosures and trying to pull all that together.
What times will those meetings be on the eighth?
Oh, yes, sir. Let me bring up my calendar. So, on the eighth, we've got, and we actually just set those up yesterday afternoon, we got Pomeria at nine in the morning, we've got the Amphitheater at eleven, meeting down here, Public Safety will be at two, and then Prosperity is at four o'clock. And just kind of the breakdown on it, you know, we've, there's really five parties that are involved with these projects. You've got the owners, in some cases, we're, with some of the projects, we're the owner. You've got county administration because at the end of the day, ensuring that all the requirements that are applicable in the law, you know, whether it's statute or DOR revenue rulings apply to the county. So, we have to be involved on all the projects. Our construction manager, Clayton, which is our representative, they're an agent, agency construction management services, that's the services they'll be providing to us. We've got project architects and then the to be determined are the contractors that will actually build everything. And so, DP Three Architects have Public Safety, Prosperity, Little Mountain, Galman School and Whitmire, and then Johnson Lashover and Associates out of Augusta will do the Amphitheater and the Pomeria Community Center project. And there was just a concern that one firm couldn't handle that volume of work, so that's why it was divvied out in that manner.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. Item thirteen on our agenda is a request from council, Reverend Curry?
Good night, Steve.
Mr. Reader?
No comment.
Mr. Shealy?
Very busy, but productive day.
Yes. Mr. Sees?
Good work session, productive day. Appreciate all the cooperation.
Mr. Hip?
No comment.
I think I'm good as well. Future meetings, we have on Veterans Day, November tenth, the offices are closed. November the eleventh, the Veterans Day Parade is at eleven o'clock, is that right? Ten o'clock?
Yeah.
I better go change that on my calendar. I'll show up when it's over. So, ten o'clock. Newberry County Council Meeting on November fifteenth and again, after, that'll be after the elections. So, we'll be swearing in our new council member that night, so that'll be a fun night for us. Economic Development Meeting on December fourth at six PM and Newberry County Council Meeting on December sixth at six PM. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mr. Shealy makes that motion?
Five o'clock.
Reverend?
We're going to meet at five o'clock on the fifteenth.
On the fifteenth? Yeah, we'll have to have a five o'clock as well, on the fifteenth?
More than likely.
Yeah. We, go ahead and, are you making the second to adjourn while you're already talking?
Yes, I am.
I thought you were. Okay. Reverend Curry makes the second, is there a discussion? All in favor of both adjournings, by show of hands, we stand adjourned. Thank you so much and thank you everyone for being here again.